Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter biweekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
The Exeter Planning Board to order March 24th, 2022. I'll start with introductions to my far right if you just introduce yourself, Mark.
Hi, everyone. Molly Cowan, Select Board.
Pete Cameron, Clerk.
Robyn Tyner.
John Brutus.
Gwen English.
Aaron Brown, Vice Chair. Our esteemed chairman is out this evening, so I will be acting in his stead. We have Dave Schappel, Town Planner, and I think that is it for staff this evening. So first order of business is to start with approval of the minutes. And those, I think we only have, we're doing really well with these.
We only have one.
Yeah, line's doing great. We used to have 10 or 15 building up on it.
It's overwhelming.
Well, it was getting heavy, but.
Three.
Okay, so we have one. And does anybody want to start us in our foray into fixing them?
I have one little typo. That's all I found on page three, line 86. It's sort of at the end of the sentence, "so that," not "t-a-t." It should be "t-h-a-t."
That's it?
Line 61, please. I'm just not, I'm just a little concerned as to what the term "unup gradient." Can someone define that for me? It's at the middle of the line.
Yeah. Sounds like Mr. Schappel's is getting quoted here, so maybe he can help us.
I think.
I assume that's going uphill.
It sounded like a Dave Schappel word, too.
61.
Line 61, page two.
Oh, I guess I don't.
Way above my page. Up gradient.
Up gradient.
Up the hill.
Sounds like it's up the hill.
Yeah.
Up the grade.
Yeah.
It's above, the gradient's this way, it goes down.
But this is a word.
Yeah.
It is?
Oh, I thought it had a.
No, I think that's what it meant, but I'm not sure.
That's okay. I don't know if I'd say it, but. Is it a real word?
I don't know.
Yeah, someone Google it.
I don't think it is. It is? Up gradient?
Yeah, it's, it might be two words, but it's, it's you.
Are we trying to say "you know what doesn't flow uphill"? Is that really what we're getting to?
Yes, because you're anticonseptic.
Yeah.
It could be two words.
Groundwater term, similar to upstream.
Underground.
It's up the hill.
That's why I, if I used it, I would use it in the subject because it's underground.
Yeah.
Yes.
You did.
Otherwise, now I got nothing.
Okay.
You want me to move to adopt?
Sure. Yes.
I shall move.
Second.
All right, I don't think we need to do a, this is to a votes, a voice vote if we can on this one.
I'm abstained since I wasn't here.
You weren't here, Robyn. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
One, me.
We have one abstention. Robin was not present, so that passes. Dave, do you have any town plan items you want to get into till we get into anything specific or just go right to the public hearing?
Yeah, just go right to the public hearing.
All right, so we're going to open the public hearing and the amendment to site and subregulations for electric vehicle charger stations.
Oh, I need the mic.
Might have to go to the podium.
You can sit over here with us.
Thank you. And as the board made aware at the last meeting, the Energy Committee has requested, requested the planning board consider an amendment to the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations addressing electric vehicle charging for new multifamily residential projects and nonresidential projects. I did mention at the last, I provided a copy for everyone at the last meeting, but also provided a copy in this packet. The Energy Committee did meet on February 9th and discussed the attached draft, and they voted unanimously to provide the draft language to the planning board for their review and consideration with, with a, with their full support and recommended adoption. So it's a pretty short amendment, and I'll read it in its entirety. There's two parts. There's one, adding a definition called Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment, or EVSE. An electrical, an electric component assembly or cluster of component assemblies designed specifically to charge batteries within electric vehicles by permitting the transfer of electric energy to a battery or other storage device in an electric vehicle. We had to add that definition because we use that term in the substance of the regulation, which is 9.13.8, and it's all in red in the attached draft. And this will become part of the site plan regs, and the title shall be, "Projects Shall Provide Electrical Vehicle Charging Readiness Based Upon the Following Standards. One, multifamily residential projects, 5% of the total number of new parking spaces. Two, nonresidential projects, 2% of the total number of new parking spaces. Three, the number shall be rounded up in all cases with a minimum of one space of electric vehicle charging readiness per project requiring site plan review. Electric vehicle charging readiness shall be defined as a parking space that meets the following requirements. One, the project has one or more dedicated circuits on the electrical panel or panels, such that the panel or panels has the service capacity to accommodate the electrical vehicle supply equipment. And, two, conduit has been installed to allow the addition of all necessary wiring to electrify installed EVSE at the parking space or spaces without having to excavate to do so." So the, what this does is it does not require installation of chargers. It just requires the conduit and, and the panel capacity to put an electric vehicle charger in the future. The committee, Energy Committee, which Renee Allen is here tonight, she is the Chair of the Energy Committee, she will speak to it as well, but their intent was not to put charges out where charges may not be needed or utilized, but have it ready in the event that people move in and they want to have it utilized and they don't have to excavate, they don't have to try to, you know, create new panels or upgrade their electrical service. And also to give an example, there's been a couple of properties in town that multifamilies that had been built that have surface, outside surface parking and no garages, and some of the owners have electric vehicles. And then it ended up prompting the property management, the owner of the property to come in after the fact and retrofit these, these chargers. So we found it prudent to put it in the plan, so it's ready because we, the Energy Committee and frankly myself, you know, that that is in, electric vehicles are becoming more prevalent and will become more prevalent in the future. And we thought it wasn't much of a burden on the applicant to do this because they're excavating the parking area anyway. They're already, the ground's already all exposed, and basically this is just conduit in the ground to, you know, 5% of the parking spaces for multifamily or 2%, and then the extra, you know, service, probably a 40-amp circuit in the, in the panel being available. With that, probably, would you like to? Chair of the Energy Committee, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Renee Allen, Chair of the Energy Committee, thank you for having me. We've sent you this report beforehand, and I'm just going to read a couple of selected items out of it for your benefit and also for those viewers at home. Okay, in this report, the Exeter Energy Committee shows the case for coordinated plan for Level 2 EVC stations in Exeter, municipal, public, and private. EV drivers primarily charge at home, but there is a need for nonresidential EVC in workplace, public, and fleet settings. The economic case for installing EV charging infrastructure is in the money EV drivers spend at local businesses while charging, not from the money spent on electricity at the charging station itself. Workplaces and residents who offer EVCs are attractive to EV owners. We have been working with Dave, Doug Eastman, and Darren Winham on this project, and our ultimate goal for our committee is emissions reduction. I'd like to tell you about the current state of EV ownership in Exeter. Just today, I got the report from Leon downstairs that now we are at 98 plug-in vehicles registered in this town and 458 hybrids for a total of 556 electric cars in this town. I have the whole graph you saw in the report where I started keeping score in 2018 when we had 10 plug-ins and 203. The majority of these cars are either Teslas or Prius, but there's quite a smattering of other things. I think now we're up to like four municipal vehicles. The police department has two, and two more came in, the ballot this time, so the town is up to four electric vehicles. And I'd also like to say that 4% of all vehicles in the United States sold in 2020 were EVs or hybrids. In New Hampshire, data is a little lower than that, and it's actually skewed because most customers have to go out of state to purchase an electric vehicle, as New Hampshire has historically lagged in inventory. The two best places in the country to buy electric vehicles are California and then the New England region, basically Massachusetts and Maine. So if you're a New Hampshire resident, you kind of have to go out of state to even find one, so it doesn't count as a sale in New Hampshire. Currently, we have 10 private EV chargers in town at the car dealerships, at the Exeter Inn, places like that, which are kind of semi-private, and we just got our first public charger about six months ago. This is a ChargePoint charger, and it's located at the Volvo station, the Volvo car dealership. I have to tell you a little bit of statistics about EV chargers and where they're at, and these figures were of maybe two months ago. California tops it out with almost 30,000 chargers in their state. Alaska bottoms it out with 73 units. We come in at 222. Maine, 440. Rhode Island, 476. Vermont, 694. Massachusetts, 4,128. And New York, 6,000. So as you can see, we have some opportunity here. So just going to skip to the summary. This report shows that the U.S. as a whole is keeping up on EVCs to match growth in EV sales. However, it also shows that New Hampshire is lagging behind in both sales and charger installations, and this presents an opportunity for us. Appropriate policy, prudent investments, and an EVC make-ready stance, such as we're suggesting, will benefit Exeter's overall economy and health. This report shows that Exeter merchants are making a good start on their own to draw EV tourists. The report also shows the lag in multifamily resident and employer uptake, and it would be in the interest of Exeter residents and businesses for the planning board to help remove potential barriers. And like Dave mentioned, at some point, the tipping point is going to be reached and it's going to be an explosion of electric vehicles. Right now, I'm sure you're aware that the automobile industry is in a ditch, kind of. There's inventory in microchips and things like that. I was just down at McFarland Ford today, and they told me that every single day, every day, they have people calling in to purchase a Mach-E, which is an electric, it's kind of a Mustang thing, and they don't have any, and they're very slow to get them, very slow. So I think when inventories are restored at the dealerships, you're going to see a lot of electric vehicles. I'm surprised, actually, that we got 30 electric, 30 additional plug-in vehicles and like another 150 last year when the inventory was so low itself. So that tells you something, that Exeter residents are buying these things, and it would be great if they could charge them, too. Thank you.
Before she takes off, does anybody have any questions they want to bring up? It's a good time to talk about it.
Oh, you know, ladies first.
No, no, no.
The parking spaces, we're going to give 5%?
Yes.
Are we changing the parking space requirement for multifamily?
I think this is something that Dave would speak to.
No. Because, you know, I'm always complaining there's never enough parking spaces for multifamily, and now we're taking away 5% of them.
Well, not yet. We're prepping. We're prepping.
Well, prepping, but at some point, that, that could happen, and hopefully it's going to happen sooner rather than later.
5% less gasoline vehicles.
No, well, no, what I'm saying, you're going to charge your car there.
He's new, John.
You're going to charge your car there, you're not going to leave it there. So you have to then, theoretically, those could become not parking spaces anymore.
Yeah, I don't quite get that because there's going to be a car there. It's just not gasoline car.
So it'll be an electric vehicle, it will be there for as long as it's charging, but if five other people have electric vehicles, that guy can't park there all night because they might want to charge their vehicle. You effectively have lost those spaces. You have 20 parking spaces and 20, and 20 vehicles, and those two aren't anyone's permanent parking space. Because someone else may want, I don't know how long it takes, and maybe you know this, how long does it take to, I guess most of the vehicles are 300 miles. How long does it take to charge it up?
If it is pure electric, it could be in the range of 300 miles. If it's a hybrid, like my car is, I get 25 miles. So basically, it would take maybe.
A hybrid doesn't need to be charged?
I have a plug-in hybrid.
Oh, okay.
My car has two. So my car, and many of these cars get maybe 25 or 40 or 50 miles before they switch over. So every day, I do charge my car in my garage for a couple hours to get that 25. However, if you've got a range of 300 miles, that's significantly longer to charge. Most apartment buildings have, people who have the electric cars have some kind of card. It's kind of like if you work in a business and you, and there's a common copier, and everybody has their card for the copier, so you know who's doing what, and I think they do, they do some scheduling with that.
Right, and that's, that's all fine. That's things they need to work out, but you've effectively given up a couple of parking spots, a 5% of your parking.
What I envisioned was the people that are going to use this, and what, an example on a couple of places that have already been through this, there's no assigned parking. It's just a parking field, and residents aren't assigned a numbered parking. I'm not aware of too many of those in Exeter, but this one isn't. And the people that own it go and park it and charge it overnight, just like it stays there, and they don't shuffle and move it. And if there needs more chargers, then they probably install more. So that parking space is being utilized by a resident, and the same way they would use it if it had a gas vehicle, if they had a gas vehicle, they're still taking that parking spot. So I just, I'm confused.
It's a shared, it's a shared, what do you call, the, the plug-in thing is, is shared by everyone. What if there are next, you know, five years, there are 10 electric vehicles?
Well, it's almost a case for more.
Yeah.
A higher percentage.
Yeah, a higher percentage of them, but I, you know.
But then you're going to have to add more chargers.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
But it doesn't.
Just saying, if you only, if you have 20 cars and you have, you know, two electric vehicles, now you're fine, but if it gets to be five or 10 or something, you're going to have to deal with it.
Granted.
And I wonder if we shouldn't add a couple of parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, granted, we dealt with, you know, when you pick something, you pick a percentage, it's, there's a little bit of thought into it and a little bit of guesswork in it. So it's not an exact science. This is what, I think this is same as a couple other communities have done, so, and this, and I think they put, I think probably, they put about the same over at, over one of the things I'm talking about, so it kind of worked out 5%. So, I don't know, you have a whole other conversation. We were not proposing adding, adding parking.
It's also not a, it's not a maximum. I think this is just a minimum.
To require.
So you, so the developers, if they see the trend going in the other direction, they can always add more.
Oh, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the parking, if there are 20 cars in 20 spaces. Initially, there's going to be a problem.
I definitely don't follow your line there, John. I get, you brought this up the other day, too. I don't, I don't follow why you think if someone has an electric car, there's going to be more vehicle demand in that complex.
Well, I'm saying that if there, if someone parks in that spot, charges their car.
Right.
And someone else has to wait to get that stuff, but, you know, and there's no other parking spots, so he leaves it there overnight, no one else can use it.
But that's what people do at night. They leave their cars.
In a, in a, in front of a charging unit that someone else.
If there's not enough charging units, that's a different issue. That's a completely different issue.
Well, it's going to have to, yeah, and I guess the owner of the apartment will have to.
Right.
Still think you should allow for a couple of extra spaces for people to shift around.
See, I don't, I don't think people are going to get up at 2:00 in the morning to switch jockey vehicles. I think you're going to have to get more charging stations.
Right. You have to figure out a system, too, but that's on that.
Right.
But I think you're making the case for doing this for more stations, but I think right now, this is a start point, because right now, there's nothing required.
I don't want more stations, I want two more parking spaces. That's all. So there's extra stuff there. We never allow.
Unintended consequences. See what you did?
I have one other, one other mention, one other thing to mention is that oftentimes when charging heads are installed, there'll be one in between two parking spaces, so that there's wiggle room for cars that are, the next car that's waiting and the one that's going out. That's how you can extend it a little bit.
Good point.
Good question.
I see what you're saying, but there is a, I mean, the planning board deals with the parking on every application.
Right.
And if, and if the developer feels that, you know, you can have that conversation and bring that up, and if they feel like they, you know, you should have more parking spaces or a couple more if you're putting in a lot of electric vehicles, then you can have that discussion.
Because in most cases of these multifamily, they're always looking for fewer spots, right?
Yeah, because our, in, in reality, I think our, I mean, if you just, just drive around to any development that's based under current zoning, parking in almost any community, and what do you see? You never see 100% utilization rate. Our parking, our parking requirements are generally high. There's, there's a couple of, you know, some certain businesses that are super busy and everybody, you know, it's the in thing, and they all go there, and you can't find parking, but those are extremely rare. You walk out there, you will see a sea of empty parking stalls pretty much all over town. So.
I've talked to them.
I know, but what I'm saying is, is our requirements, you're, you're saying add to our requirements, and I'm saying our requirements are probably added to already. And they may be able to absorb any issue with electrical vehicle. I'm just saying, I'm not saying for sure, but I see a lot of, you know, a lot of empty parking spots.
I'll keep an eye on it. Your turn.
My turn.
Better luck.
We may have.
Better luck.
You may have just addressed this with the comment that you made, Renee, and that my question was, without having to get into the weeds, I don't know a lot about charging stations, but do they, I have seen a single post with two, two plugs, so that someone on either side of that post can, can charge their car. So, like, I don't know if that constitutes one space, or is that two spaces?
Yeah, that would be two heads.
So can that be? 5%.
Right, okay. So for example, you could put a double-head charging unit in between four spaces if they, you know, if it rose together like that, and there's a little more wiggle room for you there. Okay. Great. A lot of work went into this, thank you.
It's just the action.
Your what?
I guess I actually should ask it to anyone in the public that wants to speak about this. From the public? Want to talk about it? Nope? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, I think. I think we're all set, we're good.
My only question is, is there an issue? I'm also on the Energy Committee, am I allowed to vote?
Sure. Why wouldn't you?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We can't vote twice.
Okay.
Your vote might count twice as much, though.
All right, then I'll vote.
Go ahead.
This is just my editing hat on. The number shall be rounded, can it be rounded up instead of round up? And number three.
Oh, yeah.
Rounded.
Yes.
I, I agree.
Before people learned how to text, they used to call it English. Still speak in English?
So can we just make a motion?
Right, I think so. We're looking for a motion here, Dave.
Do you want it rounded?
No, no.
No, a motion on.
Number shall be.
On making these changes.
Rounded.
Roundy.
It's a vast tent.
Rounded. We're voting for ED over there.
And does this get two readings? Is this, are we?
You don't have any required.
With, with site or with site plan subdivision, doesn't it get, does it get two?
We went through that drill. I went through that drill, and, and it cert, past practice, well, sometimes you did two readings, sometimes you did three, and I was like, well, you're only required one.
Only required one.
Yeah, so you can do what you want, you can let it sit if you want and make a motion next meeting, or after the public hearing, you are free to act upon it.
Okay.
Sometimes the benefit of a second reading and so forth is like to have it on the public meeting, so anybody that didn't see the notice may have watched the meeting and now feels strongly about one way or the other, and they can come back to the second meeting and, you know, and say their thing. We do that with like the CIP and so forth, just to make sure. So you'd be happy, you know, there's no, there's no requirement to do it tonight, but you certainly can.
Are we able to change it and still vote on it?
Well, not substantively. If you change it substantively.
But we can change the word rounded. We can make an amendment. We can make an amendment and accept this without one-
That doesn't change the intent.
Be deep in the weeds, right?
That doesn't change the intent at all. You can freely do that.
Yeah, we're in the weeds. Let's get out of the weeds.
So I did, I did provide a motion if you want to, um, move to adopt the proposed electrical vehicle charging readiness amendment to our site plan review and subdivision regulations as presented by the town planner, if you're ready to make a motion.
I would be glad to make that. Although I need to probably read it off of that instead of off my phone.
You can just say what he said.
Yeah. What Dave said.
What Dave said.
Yeah, I wrote it down. I didn't put it on.
All right. I move to adopt the proposed electric vehicle charging readiness amendment to our site plan review and subdivision regulations as presented by the town planner with the one typo, the word rounds changed to rounded.
Anybody have a second there?
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Just do roll call. I'm not gonna get you individual, just say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 6 to 0. Thank you for your work.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you for our patience.
Thank you, Renee.
I don't agree with him, but that's all.
So are you thinking it's like a handicap spot? Is that what you're getting at? If it's an electric spot, only electric people will be there? So it kind of like becomes like a handicap thing?
No, I didn't think about that.
Handicap is a good analogy, but it-
The family with two electric cars.
Exactly.
Well, you get more stations.
I see what you're saying. It's like-
I get it.
If someone comes in with a gas vehicle and that's the only spot left.
Yeah, he's gonna take it.
He's not, well, yeah, but, but, oh, I thought you said he's not gonna take it, so leaving that parking spot.
No, he'll take it. At 11 o'clock at night, he'll take it.
That's what I'm saying.
By 11 o'clock at night, if you need to park your car, you should be home.
You can only park there if you have an electric vehicle.
It never works the way you think it's going to.
Okay.
It's chain. Some people just can't handle chain.
Oh, my God.
But you didn't vote yes.
You did, you did. Now, hold it again. I give you credit for that.
No, I want, I want the station.
You do?
Ah, everywhere.
Okay, so we have the next on our agenda is the Ray Farm LLC Planning Board Case Number 22-3, Ray Farmstead Road Preliminary Conceptual Consultation, redesign of remaining improvements for condominium project. Uh, Dave, do you have anything to say on that matter?
I do, thank you. Uh, as you said, the applicant is requesting a preliminary conceptual consultation to discuss a proposed redesign and the remaining improvements associated with the Ray Farm condominium project, which is an active adult community development located off of Ray Farmstead Road off of Epping Road. The subject property is located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, uh, tax map 478. Also, you've included a letter of explanation and supporting plans dated March 16th from the applicant. I do want to stress that the applicant is requesting a preliminary conceptual consultation, and there's two preliminary reviews prior to formal submission allowed by state law. One is the preliminary conceptual consultation phase and the next is the design review phase. So preliminary conceptual consultation phase is the, the limits shall define limits of the preliminary consult, which shall be directed at review of the basic concept of the proposal and suggestions which might be of assistance in resolving problems with meeting requirements during the final consideration. Such consultation shall not bind either the applicant or the board, and statement made by the planning board members shall not be the basis for disqualifying said members or invalidating any action taken. The board and the applicant may discuss proposals in a conceptual form only and in general terms, such as desirability of types of development and proposals under the master plan. Such discussion may occur as required under paragraph, uh, ID, but such discussions may occur only at a formal meeting of the board. So there wasn't any, you know, butter notification. So I think we are bound to stay within those conceptual, uh, discussions. And what those are, I mean, I admittedly, we don't do them, I tell people to go through the design review so the butters get notified so you can get into more specifics, you know, because the design review phase kind of dictates what kind of helps you inform on conceptual consultation, because the, the design review stage in the state law says the board is designated, may engage in non-binding discussions beyond conceptual and general discussions, which involve specific design and engineering details, provided however that the design review phase may resume only after identification and notice to a butters. So I just want to make that clear, that this has to be a very general, high-level thing. If we get into any details, we really should move, you know, notice a butters and come back and do the, you know, under a design review phase or a formal submission. Thank you. Yep?
My name is Dennis Hamel from GM2 Associates, and I represent, uh, Ray Farm LLC and Willie Creek Development for this project. Um, I was involved with the original project as well. We had the approval back, uh, five, six years ago, uh, when they had, um, you know, four buildings, um, A, B, C, and D. Um, and the first three buildings are, um, 32 units each, and they're all the same size and same style. Uh, the one building, which was, we're calling Building D, uh, was over in the location of the, uh, near the mobile station off, very close to Epping Road as well. The applicant looked at that location and decided after seeing what he's got now, that he wants to move that building and not put it there. So he has some other land that abuts the Ray Farm project, and he wants to subdivide a piece off and move that building from that location down by the mobile station, uh, up into behind the other building, further back into the property, more or less into the woods, uh, just beyond where Building C is located now, if you're familiar at all with the site. Uh, so that's what we're proposing. Uh, we went to the zoning and required a variance to put the building there, because that's in the C3 zone and residential isn't allowed in that. Did get a variance from the zoning book, uh, two-unit building in that location. Uh, so that's what we're proposing to do. Um, still gonna have all of the required parking and all of the utilities and all those things that are required in the site plan review, obviously in that location, and it's gonna be tied to the, uh, water and sewer, which is available in, you know, in the development, so we can just tie into that. Uh, so the building's gonna look exactly like the other three buildings that are currently built, um, and that was his, his pleasure to do that. So that's what we're here for, to now basically introduce, that's what we're planning on doing. Um, as you know, we can't talk about the engineering or any of those kind of things with this, but that's the concept of what we're trying to do there. We believe it's a good fit, because that, that area there wouldn't be much use for a industrial or commercial use where it is, uh, up on a side of a hill. So that, that's where it would be more difficult to do commercial there. So this is where we feel is the best location for a relocation of that building. And where the old building used to be, where it was previously approved, will then become open space for development and never, never be built on. So that would provide more green space closer to Epping Road and evermore offer to other uses in the area. So I don't know what else we need to say or more to say about that, because we can't really get into the details or any engineering. Uh, just trying to get the board's views or questions they might have on what we're doing there, or want to do there.
Okay, so we're, uh, really limited in this discussion. It's non-binding, but it's still quite limited. Does, does anybody have any, uh, questions about what that means in terms of what you can or can't say right now? Obviously, he's not gonna say much. You ask him a specific question, uh, he's probably not gonna tell you. So, but you can ask.
We ask a question and it's, um, identified as being too specific, can, one of you will say-
He'll probably slap your hand.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready. I have a lot of questions, but I don't.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure you know where it was originally, which one's original versus the new.
Okay. I think that's on the plan.
Yeah, I have the two-
You want to show for the viewers, sir?
I have both, but which one's old versus new?
Which is old versus new?
Okay, well, this shows the four buildings as we're proposing, but the building was right in this location.
Yeah.
And here's the mobile station right here.
Right.
So now this, all this land will become open space. So we're proposing to move it from here, extend the drive and put the building out back.
Right. Okay.
And before, that was gonna be open space up there?
Before, that wasn't even land part of the development.
Ah, okay.
The original lot line was somewhere in here like this, so Mr. Chef Master is going to be taking a chunk of his land and adding it to the Ray Farm project.
Okay.
And what that does is it also increases the square foot per unit, um, of the site, because we're adding a lot more than what was there before. And what's there before is still there.
Right.
As far as land.
So, um, in the interest of just lack of confusion, there's a lot of stuff going on with this project, uh, somewhat aware of, and we are very limited with what we can do right now. We are in a non-binding situation, there's no butter notification, this is sort of, uh, off-the-cuff conversation. I'm not sure it's required, but we're here. Um, at the same time, uh, there's some, you know, maneuverings going on between property owners and the town, uh, so I think we probably need to really limit this discussion, unless there's something you feel like you want to know. Very, you know, generic question like that from Robin's pretty appropriate, but that's like about it.
Okay.
Do you guys have anything else that you feel like you want to talk about?
Yes.
I have some questions.
What's the concept here? What, we can only talk about the con, what's the concept? The co, what? You use the word concept, or, well, the statute or the regs use the word concept. That's all we can look at. What's the concept here? Is it, I'm a little, is it just moving a building? Um, is, what?
Well, the, the concept from the applicant's point of view is that the locate, previous location was not as desirable as this location. So he thought that he could get better sales, basically, by moving it and putting it into a better location. So that, the concept in, in general terms, that's what he wants, to just move it from there to there. And in doing so, he had to add land to the project and, and all the other details will, will come follow once we submit the final application, is, you know, all the engineering part of it, to make it work.
Okay, so the concept then, basically, is that there's a preference here of putting the building at a different place than the original approval.
Yes.
Now, help me before, did we not consider a much more detailed way back a number of years ago where there was to be a hotel and a restaurant and back at a convention center back up?
It's been a lot of conceptual thinking.
Yeah, I understand that.
Absolutely.
That was on the, uh, the property to the north?
Yes.
That was on the Carlisle property.
Okay.
And then they actually, they actually came in and this board approved a subdivision of that into three lots and a cul-de-sac was built off the terminus of the Tiff Road where it abuts Carlisle's property. And that's one thing I, I'll, I'll mention now, in general terms, the town is of the opinion, you know, the town is gonna proceed with constructing the Tiff Road. The applicant, you know, the Tiff Road, as you know, on the plans, we all know where the Tiff Road in it goes, and you approved a Carlisle subdivision that had a cul-de-sac at the end of-
But that was not this, that-
No, no, that was another one.
Okay, that, that's all I-
But in general terms, any final plans, it's, it's, you know, during the, during the review, any final plans or submission of formal plans, this, any road that connects to Building D must be compatible with that Tiff Road, because we fully expect-
Yeah, but then we can't even talk about that.
No, I can talk about, I can just say that. That's general terms, it needs to be compatible with the Tiff Road.
Okay.
So.
Everybody that needs to be aware of that position of the town is aware of.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
But on the other hand, if we're talking about concept here, I'm having a little problem still getting my hands or brain or whatever it is around the concept. I think I know what you guys are talking about. And it's, it's, that's all we can talk about. That's basically moving a building from point A, uh, point D to D1. And that's the concept of this, the whole thing. So that's all we can talk about.
I think these are generally reserved for large projects with multiple moving pieces and personal residential.
Yeah, okay.
Things can go here and there, and it's very conceptual form. I mean, this has final rating on it, so we're, we're pretty, I'm not sure how much concept we have to discuss.
Right.
Well, it seems like you're just moving from a site on the road to a site that's more private, to be more desirable. But I, my only question I have, and maybe, I don't know if this is out of bounds, is what was that land originally, where, where it's being moved to, intended for, or zoned for?
It's zoned for commercial.
Okay. Okay.
But they received a variance.
Okay.
It was all zoned for commercial.
Okay.
That's our thing in Exeter.
Right. Okay.
It, it seems to me that we now know what the concept is, and we can't do anything more.
Seems to me you're right.
So what would you like to do, Mr. Chair?
Do you have any, are you looking for any other feedback from us?
I don't think so, just, like I said, we, we thought we could go a little more detail, but, but Dave is right about, you know, the butters not being notified, we really can't get into the engineering detail.
Makes it challenging.
Well, I'm sorry I got the two projects confused.
That's all right.
But I just knew there was something else going here. And it was an interesting-
I can tell you, I can tell you this about the project, and it would have been the same even with the building where it used to be, is that the, all of these buildings that are in the development have a basement, which has a space for every single, unit owner has at least one space inside that basement, which easily could be hooked up to for EV at any time.
I hope we can't talk about it.
Tis details, not ours.
Not easy.
Okay.
Those are built. Okay. Yes, Gwen?
I just have, I think this is allowable. If I have the building in the right place, it's basically, it's on the other side of, of the, the Ray Farm Road, is that right? Like, is this correct? I'm sorry, I just need to know, is this where it would be?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I understand that the Tiff Road only goes to here right now.
Right, it's not, right. Okay.
The last sheet really kind of shows the relationship, the third sheet. You can kind of see where the dash line is.
Yep.
This, um, curious about the Tiff Road. Is that planned to be extended or is that what, that's it?
Yeah, that, the town was intended to construct it this construction season, but that, it has gotten a little complicated with the owner and the town actually filed litigation today to the court.
So that Tiff Road will go right, that'll go right in front of that Building D?
Yeah, that's the dash line. That's why I said this kind of road kind of sweeps across it. It's not, you know, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be, any, any formal submission, it needs to be compatible with grading and so forth with the, with the design.
But as this is proposed, the feeder road there, or whatever you call it, secondary roads will come from Building C to D?
Correct.
And then what happens when they do that Tiff Road that-
That's why I said it needs to be compatible.
Okay.
Is the Tiff Road still required?
The town, it has the building, the town needs it as the right to use.
To get to the-
Well, I, I under-
It's a lot of money to get it to where it is right now.
Okay, but that doesn't really answer my question.
Why do we need it?
Is it still, is it still needed?
It's needed to access other property.
Okay.
That's why it was voted for and designed.
I mean, does it, does it still need to cross the greenway?
The what?
Well, there's, there's a greenway there, and if there's going to be a road from C to D-
That's another discussion.
Okay.
We can't go there.
Right.
Okay.
No, we can discuss the Tiff.
Because we want it to be compatible. I think the general town needs it.
I just, yeah, I'm just thinking, if it doesn't have to cross a greenway, why do it?
If we want to discuss it, we put on a future agenda, put it at the Tiff Road and I, it's all, it's decided.
Okay.
You got your-
It's a bull over.
Yeah, normally you get your hands slapped on those. Okay, I took one for you.
Thank you.
I know you would have asked the same thing.
I would.
Any last shots, Gwen?
No.
Okay.
I shot it for.
So, do we close this hearing?
It's not.
What do we do with this? Well, I did, I did bring it up on the agenda.
It's a hearing. It's a public, it's a notice, but it is a hearing.
Okay.
We never opened anything.
We allow, I didn't invite anybody in the public to speak. Does anybody else want to speak? See, nobody, okay. We'll bring it back and I guess we continue it? We need, we need a motion to do something here.
Close it. I don't think, just closing. I think if you were going to proceed, wouldn't you want to, next step, either do the design review, a formal application, so you can notify others and we can talk about more detail?
Our intent is, from this point, is to go forward with a full application for a site plan review.
So we'll just close the concept.
Yeah, we haven't really opened anything.
I think that's appropriate.
We did open it.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. It's ready for a formal application. Let's just move to that stage. Do we need to vote?
No. We don't need to do anything. Have a nice day.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Doing great, Aaron. So, guess what? The next question is, do we want to flip the discussion of the Tiff Road for another meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I had to ask the question.
And I kept looking at them. And they're coming in, they're building this road.
Because this makes sense. You'd want to leave people not here.
It does. I like that.
What's the purpose of crossing two greenways, which would be a wildlife corridor?
To get to here.
That's great.
What I'm saying, that, it's not, did you promise? I don't remember, I don't know. Gwen?
Well, I suppose, conceptually.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, kids, we still have a meeting to get through. Talk amongst yourselves over here.
We are.
The subcommittee of the planning board just forming generically over here.
Keying up the, keying up a future discussion.
We all do work with Andy.
On the Tiff Road, crossing two greenways.
There you go. So, is it, let's just jump to any other town planner items?
Do we have to do?
Oh, yeah, just wanted to, have we met since the vote or if we did, I didn't say anything, but the-
We have not, no.
We have not, I didn't think so. Because the, one item of note passed that I proposed was a bike and pedestrian master plan. That passed the warrant, so I've-
Good.
Got it on my calendar. I started the RFP, going to issue that, and that's what I will have. The master plan oversight committee will be helping me with that and we'll be moving forward on that, so that was good news. And the no field modifications have been requested. Performance guarantee, a reduction release, none have been acted upon, one was just requested. I don't even remember the property, but at the next meeting, I'll fill you in on that request. And, and then I did put it in your packets. You did get, just went to a notice of a development of regional impact in Brentwood. And that was sent to the, sent to the town and I put it in your packets. Okay, and that's all I have.
So that, if that would go to, that would go to RPC regardless of how a town reacted to this notice? So if we said we feel it's a, it's, it's, it would potentially affect us or, or if Fremont said, or not Fremont, that's in Fremont, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, how this works is basically when you, when a, when the Brentwood Planning Board in this case determined that it was a DRI, a development of regional impact, and they voted as such, and then they identified the communities that they thought would, could be impacted, it basically gives those towns and the Regional Planning Commission, it's all, you know, when you do a development of regional impact, you identify the towns that you feel impacted and automatic goes to the Regional Planning Commission, who goes to their review of it and submits comments. And it just basically gives the town kind of a butter status, if you will, and then they can come to the hearing and they can, you know, if you want to submit comments, you can. And it's like, it basically gives you standing to show, you know, and like, if it's not a development of regional impact, you know, you can't just go over to a planning board meeting and start talking about it. You know, so this gives you that opportunity if you choose to take it.
These are rare.
They are rare, and this one is pretty far away. It's on like the other side by Fremont, so it, but it's on the, it's close to the Exeter River. So that's kind of, I read the planning board minutes, that's what they determined. Anybody downstream, I think even boardsmen could have notified.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, Dave, I want to ask you just if I'm free to speak for a couple seconds on the email that I sent out last week.
On me?
Okay. So I sent this board email last week. I know at least a couple of you got it. We get into really specific rules of engagement, you know, when we're on a town board like this where I think there's a rule, we're not supposed to, more than two of us talk together, right? Isn't it that it-
Sounds like it.
I think three or more with or outside of this forum.
Right, so two is okay.
Right.
But once you get to a third potential planning board member, you're really not supposed to have those kind of conversations, so.
And that includes email, I think.
It would have to, right. So, so I just sent an email saying, look, I'd like to discuss some stuff that's going on in our process in the right way, in a public forum, because I have become aware of it and have been on this board, I don't even know how long now. It's been at least, I think, six years or so. And through that time, we've had some great stuff going on in the town and some stuff that is, we're, we're seeing variances being granted, which I personally consider pretty significant variances. And we're a town, we're in charge, the planning board is tasked with handling amendments to the planning, handling changes to zoning, making, you know, massaging that and then making recommendations to the town when the town citizens vote on potential changes, which is when really things can really quote unquote change in a town. When you see changes in zoning, you tend to see significant changes in the future of a community or the direction of a community. So it's not always easy, but that's, that's the process, is it should go, you know, zoning change should be going to a town vote and seeing what people want to do, what is the pleasure of the citizens. One thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is that on Epping Road, there's been a lot of development, which I'm, I'm actually very excited about. It's part of why I got involved, was to try to help that. And yet our zoning seems to still be lagging what is happening in the dirt out on Epping Road. Because the, the vast corridor is zoned C3 zoning, which is commercial highway zone, right up and down that road, with vast infrastructure improvements that have been put in to the cost of millions of dollars. Water and sewer, underground utilities, additional streetlights, lots of ins and outs now, much better flow, lots of studies on that property. There's a huge corridor there to be unlocked to the, for the future of our community. And yet it seems to me personally that our zoning for what is allowed there to happen is really truly lagging. And I'm not sure why that is, but when I look at and try to study what we're responsible for as a board, I, I want to take some of that responsibility and hold myself accountable and say, hey, I should be doing a better job of helping that corridor meet the future needs of our community. Because for that to be zoned as a C3 zone, which allows the limited uses it does, and isn't very creative, seems to be a stumbling block towards really having that be what it can become. So I think I'm asking you as part of this board to look at that and give that some thought. You know, are there other uses that we should be allowing by right? Are there uses we should have on special exception? Right now, residential use is not, is not even allowed on the C, in the C3 zone. Are you aware of that?
No, because we have residential things that peel off of it, like the one-
We have them that are primary uses too.
Yeah.
So what's happened, I think, is that our government process is kind of working around the zoning. And I don't think that's really because of ill intent. I think that's because our zoning is lagging the needs of our community. That's my own opinion, okay? So I want us to be a little bit aware of that, because that's, that's areas where you could really see good things happening. But a challenge to me is if we don't get in front of the zoning, then it becomes a very arbitrary process. And my, my personal concern is right now, I think it's a somewhat arbitrary process where things are getting passed in significant projects through the use of variances. Because a used variance is a pretty substantial variance. There's a lot of arguments whether they even have merit. So I'm troubled by that process, but I'm also recognizing that it's probably more a symptom of the problem. And I think the problem is our zoning is out of whack with the needs of our community.
I would agree that variants are like waivers, that if they're getting passed every time, there's a red flag and it either means we're rubber stamping things because we want to be nice and we're not thinking, or, you're right, the, there's a reason.
Right.
A trend, and it needs to be looked at.
Right. And, and so what happens to our board, Roger, is by the time we get a project, the applicants go, if they need variances, they go and get those first. So they go and, that's the process. So they go and they figure, all right, what do we need variances for to do what we want to do with our project? If they get what they want, then they come to us and they fully design a project. And then they come in front of us. But at that point, if, if we have concerns about any of those variances that were granted, it's a done deal. It's not in our sandbox at that point. But when you talk about zoning in general, that kind of is our sandbox. So I just say, we, you know, we should, we should be a little bit ahead of that, one way or the other. Because the last, I think it's the last three projects that I personally recall of significance on that road, all involved a substantial residential component. And, you know, some, and I can't tell you that I'm the guru and I could tell you it should all be residential or should all be commercial, but it does seem that a mix makes a lot of sense to me. Where if you, if you lock the door on commercial, if we use all resident, that land all for residential use, there's not a lot of corridors that have exciting commercial opportunities in the town of Exeter. That is one of them. Right off the highway with major infrastructure there now. Easy access, in and out downtown, other areas, if you look at other communities, those entry points off of exits tend to thrive commercially. For whatever reason, we seem to be lagging a bit. So I just wanted to discuss that and welcome anybody else who wanted to put in some input. And I, and I don't, you know, for me, it's more about kind of future and trying to move forward in our community and help the community that way. I just think if we do it in an organized fashion, it's much better, it's much more likely to have great results. Because if people are, get more allowed uses, it might excite other people that we're not even thinking about right now. Because they, oh, I didn't know I could do that there. And then they try to, you know, bring something on there and their creativity gets unleashed and the potential of what could happen within the community really comes aboard if it's done in that fashion, so. Anybody have any comments or am I out on an island here?
I mean, I just think it sounds like maybe there's some collaboration between the planning and zoning board as far as just a discussion, unless, this is for Dave to make a proposal. I don't want to step on your toes either on what the overall town design for the use would be, because ideally, whatever we between us all think should happen, then variances and waivers should be rare.
Right, right.
They should not, they should be the exception, not the rule.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
How much more land is available for development? Or are you thinking about potentially other uses if something gets torn down?
Oh, I think, I, I'm definitely thinking in that regard, John. I think redesign is pretty likely.
Rather than taking, rather than, some of that's just not buildable.
Correct.
No, but a lot of, there's not a lot of good vacant land.
Yeah, not on the road itself. Not on the road itself, right.
But you get too far off the road and then you've got a lot of wetland issues, a whole bunch of other things.
And if you're off the main roadway, residential is what's going to work, not commercial.
Yeah, but that's my cross-country ski playground.
I'm going for it, John.
Well, we also need to think, we, we don't want to overload, we can overload that highway if we're not careful.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm overloading it with vehicles, electric or not, irrelevant.
Charging state.
But I've been, it, it has always been of concern to me is, is that we, when we look at a project and we worry about the traffic for that project, that's all we worry about. We don't worry about the traffic for the prior project or traffic coming on for another project. Exeter hasn't, has, well, we've already been on this bandwagon and I won't go on it anymore. But I'm concerned with, with putting too many more automobiles of whatever variety or trucks on that stretch of road. And is that a limiting factor? I think it has to be.
Of course it is.
What?
Of course it is. But VHB, that's why we use some of the Tiff funding to do a corridor stunt.
Yes.
And we looked at all the existing uses. We made assumptions, because nobody has a crystal ball, but we made some assumptions on the square footage of commercial space that could be built on each of the vacant lots and the vacant land. And then based on that square footage, how much traffic that would generate. And then also added some assumptions and some background additional traffic based on development elsewhere that has to come through this corridor. So we looked at it and we, we came up with quite a few options to like, okay, this is what would be completely needed, you know, but it, I forget, five, you know, a five-section, you know, cross-section roadway, you know, five lanes, you know, center, center turn lane in some spots, barrier in others. So it just was like, whoa, you know? So we kind of, we're scaling it down and we're working on that to come up with a plan. Actually, we're, we're ready to pull the trigger on improvements from Cronin Road, because we don't own Cronin Road. Cronin Road's right next to the gas station that's in front of that, you know, right next to the gas station.
Yeah.
Cronin Road's right next to that. We, we only own to that. Then it's the state, they own the bridge over 101 all the way to the high school, so they own 27th, the rest of Exeter, so we don't have any jurisdiction over that. We're already scheduled to make improvements from Cronin Road to the lights we put in. And we put in light, so we're, Pete, I understand, we are definitely aware of that and we have plans in place to address it as development continues.
Well, I'm, I'm, I think I'm aware of the decision. You all have been going down and concerned about this for a number of years, but I, I will just reiterate that.
Yeah, that's a concern of ours, yeah, it's a concern always. But then it's a delicate balance. Do you, do you, do you build a roadway like, you know, to, to cover maximum capacity and have level of service eight 24/7? No, you don't. There's gonna, you know, you, you gotta strike a balance and make a decision, because, you know, you don't want too much infrastructure. So, because 95% of the day, it's not needed, you know? That's what, because they all plan around peak traffic hours, you know, and it can be bad, you know, from three to four, but then, you know, any other time, you know, the other 22 hours in a day, it, you know, it's fine and you get through, you know, smoothly, so. The, the, we'll, we'll, we'll take that, yeah. Definitely that's into consideration. And then to, to, to respond, Aaron, I mean, if you, what you're saying, from hearing you're right, you know, is maybe look at the zoning in this area. Well, we have a closely written group on board to help me with the, the zoning that I've described. It's kind of a pretty town-wide kind of look at zoning that we've talked about here and at the Housing Advisory Committee. And I will make this, you know, this is obviously going to be a part of focus and I'll hear what you said today and we'll, we'll look at it to see what we incorporate into that, you know, and, and we'll run it by the, you know, the planning board as we go along, obviously. But we just, we just finalized the contract language. I just reviewed the contract and sent it off to them, so I have some studies money that I'm going to engage them probably in the next month, so we can definitely address that corridor, put a little emphasis on that corridor during that project.
Great.
Perfect.
Thanks. All right. Does anybody else have any other things you want to talk about, planning board issues, before we head out? We're, we didn't quite make gate of Clark. I can only blame myself for that.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
You may.
Hope to adjourn.
Hope to adjourn. Have a good evening, everybody.
Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel.